This is the City Council meeting Tuesday, April 4th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Well, really, it isn't 6:00. We're late. It's 10 after 6:00. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS A Section 403-B to D and Section 6 of the Sanford Council Rules and Procedures as amended and adopted May 3rd, 2022. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 882-08500150, password 928147, and via computer at the link provided. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.samfordmain.org under email citydepartment/citycouncil. And if you wonder why I read those numbers so slow, I really hate it when somebody gives me a phone number and they talk so fast, I can't possibly write it down. So I try to do it slow enough so people can get that. If you would all stand, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please join me for a moment of silence? We're going to do roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Councilor Stackpole.
Present.
Councilor Hanselman.
Present.
Councilor Martell.
Present.
Councilor Trenchmontane.
Present.
And I'm Mayor Brink, and also present Assistant City Manager Steve Buck and Executive Assistant Larissa Ricketts. Oh, sorry, long day. Okay, we're going to do the minutes, past minutes, 23-144-01, order to approve the minutes from the regular City Council meeting held on January, nope, March 21, 2023. Ann?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Second, Jonathan, all those in favor? All right, and we were all here for that, right? Okay. 23-148-01, order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the City Council held on March 21, 2023. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Jonathan and second Pete, all those in favor? 23-151-01, order to approve the minutes from the special City Council meeting held on March 28, 2023. Can I have a motion, please? Pete?
Motion to pass.
Second, all those in favor? Thank you. There were no subcommittees and there's no mayor's report. Do we have a city manager's report?
The first thing I want to call out this evening is the state legislature adjourned on March 30th after passage of a baseline budget. Referring to the legislative bulletin issued on March 31st, the state legislature passed the baseline budget, i.e. no new spending cuts or initiatives to avoid a shutdown of state government as of July 1, 2023. Baseline budget, LD 424, that was passed included 55% for the essential programs and services for our schools, the full 5% appropriated to municipal revenue sharing, and funding for the homestead program at $25,000 and 76%, a 3% increase over the prior year. As well as the, right, the baseline also included first-year funding for the seniors' tax stabilization plan, so that's a pretty amazing piece in itself, assumed, which is assumed to reimburse municipalities at 100% for the first year of the program. From a municipal perspective, as it relates to property tax stabilization, this action is a very positive and stabilizing action. There are many remaining battles drawn upon party lines around funding and programs and possible reductions in income taxes that will be subject to future debates. The debates will be in the future as the legislature adjourned on March 30th in order for the baseline budget to go into effect absent an emergency preamble 90 days after passage, ensuring funding for state government as of July 1. There was a joint order adopted by the legislature providing that, quote, "that all matters not finally disposed of at the time of adjournment of the first regular session of the 131st legislature in the possession of the legislature shall be held over to a subsequent special or regular session of the 131st legislature in the posture in which they were at the time of adjournment." So this is unprecedented. They closed business in order to have the baseline budget go forward. Again, this is new ground. Absent a directive from the governor calling the members of the House and Senate back into session, a majority of the members of each party must vote to return. A poll of the legislators on that same day, 3:30, 23, failed to produce a majority to reconvene. New information as of today indicates that an expected special session of the legislature will convene as of April 5th, so this Wednesday, to continue work. Other legislative bills of significant impact for us, LD 1060 is an act to support municipal public safety by increasing state municipal revenue sharing to 7%. It's currently at 5%. The bill seeks to, and this is sponsored by Troy Jackson, who's the Senate President, it would increase revenue sharing by 102 million, and the caveat is that any of the receipts granted to municipalities above the 5% would have to fund fire, law enforcement, and emergency medical services. So the bill seeks to aid towns in having adequate funds towards these essential public safety operations. This seems to have a large amount of support, even bipartisan support, so I look forward to that bill potentially passing this year. LD 793 is an act to support municipal services with revenue sharing. This bill seeks to offer an option to a municipality which may elect to forego the current distribution under main revenue sharing in lieu of taking a 10% share of the sales tax revenue generated in each municipality. Each town would have to inquire with main revenue services to gauge which of the two options would be better. For service centers such as Sanford, the 10% may well exceed the revenue sharing current formulation. It is unclear as to how this would impact other towns as far as the revenue sharing, because if we took our 10% off the top out, how does that impact the 5% that goes to all towns being distributed? So that's yet to be answered. I'm sure it will be lively debated. The municipal association has supported this, neither for nor against, simply being able to go in and lend comment. LD 1153.
Before you go on, would you explain the two choices? I was a little confused.
Right now, you have your proportional cut of Rev 1 and Rev 2 under municipal revenue sharing, which sets aside the first 5% of state income tax, corporate tax, and sales tax. So 5% of those three major areas, broad-based taxation goes into a fund, the municipal revenue sharing fund. We get our proportional piece of that under Rev 1 and Rev 2. Rev 2 favors service center communities, which is 20% of the distribution. Under this proposal, the Office of Revenue Services, they can tell you how much sales tax is generated in each community and what category and everything. All of that data is already there. You would have the option to look at whatever that total collection is, you could take 10% of that in lieu of revenue sharing. So this favors the service center communities that have the predominance of the sales tax generation in a given region, so we may fare better under this if it goes through. We'd have to do that assessment.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's see. The next is LD 1153. This is an act to allow municipalities to tax personal solar energy equipment under 5 megawatts. I have been talking ad nauseam for four years now about this particular bill. Without reading this all to you, there was a piece of legislation a number of years ago that created the definition of community solar. The intent of that legislation was for you and I putting solar panels on our home, a municipal building, putting some solar panels on the roof, or even having a small solar array beside a building directly connected to, you know, behind-the-meter type of connection was considered to be community solar. In the rush to get that bill put through to exempt those particular type of installations such as wouldn't cause an increased tax burden upon you for putting in solar because the state supports that, they lost it and they swept in projects at 5 megawatts or less. So now there's a huge consortium of solar arrays, including in our community, that they created a carve-out whereby 50% of that value is considered exempt from taxation. And these are 5-megawatt projects that are highly profitable because the state subsidizing them at 13.5 cents per kilowatt hour. Right? So part of our economic development strategies with solar was, it's a high-value project that's going on land that was otherwise undeveloped. It doesn't scar it forever, and then they created this carve-out, and there goes half of the taxation. So this bill seeks to correct that. Another one that was up today.
Steve, can you, just, what was, was the cap changed on the megawatts to a smaller amount?
No, it is actually represented David Woodsum that we all know well, that sponsored this particular bill. We noted when I was working on this last Thursday with the LPC that it doesn't fully resolve yet because it doesn't go back and better define those home installations. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done in this bill, but we've waited for several years now for this bill to finally come forward because of these projects.
Yeah, I just have concerns about home systems where they're maybe like 20 kilowatts or so, certainly well under 5 megawatts, but.
Right, right. That's not the, that's the intent for those to be completely exempt, but not this 50% for a 5-megawatt project, which is borderline commercial, correct?
Yeah, thank you.
LD 655 is an act to extend the date by which compliance is required for affordable housing development, increased numbers of dwelling units, and accessory dwelling units. This is LD 2003. The state has not met its commitments either in funding to the municipalities or providing the logistical support for us to do full code adoption to this. LD 655 seeks to delay that by a two-year period of time for everybody to catch up. And the next thing I have is news, where to get it now and in the future. With the ending of the Sanford Springvale News, online and print, Sanford is without a dedicated newspaper yet again. The Sanford Springvale News was an exceptionally well-done local paper which widely distributed, which was widely distributed in Sanford and served our community's needs. It has been a tremendous loss. Hopefully, that loss is short-term. I'd like to bring it to people's attention that please take a look at our city's bi-weekly publication. It's done by Jordan Wilson, our communications coordinator. It's entitled "The Main Street Memo." It can be found on the city's website and is available by email once you sign up. It will come to your email box automatically. "The Main Street Memo," Edition Number 11, was issued last week, and I encourage anyone who hasn't yet seen the memo to sign up and receive it by email. It is truly fantastic and is nearly a newspaper in itself. We're currently experiencing opening rates of over 67%. In this last edition, the highest viewed and clicked articles were one of the report and future increased coverage of Sanford, that is, the group that's working on another option. Second was the council meeting summary and link to view the meeting. Third was the interviews that were conducted with the city council candidates, and the fourth most clicked in that was the emergency parking ordinance. But I would note there's a lot of human interest stories in there, especially about our employees who might be retiring and others. So you may sign up for the news, e-newsletter at the city's website at samfordmain.org. There's a link on the front of our webpage. You simply click that link, put your email address, and you'll be on the distribution. There's also a citizens' group meeting to formulate a revival of a newspaper in Sanford Springvale, and they are looking at the option of a restart of the Sanford Springvale News or a partnership with The Reporter, which is a paper out of Waterboro that covers Sanford and Springvale but does not yet have dedicated coverage. I would encourage everybody, so they put out a survey, this group put out a survey, just, I first saw it on Sunday, to all who formally received the Sanford Springvale News, asking them to complete the survey on possible future, the possible future for Sanford Springvale News. In that survey, you can, you can answer questions that may drive them towards doing a standalone, or you can answer questions that may influence them to partner with The Reporter as far as future news coverage and the dedicated pages in there for Sanford Springvale. The next item I have is the demolition of the International Woolen Mill Stack. The demolition of the stack started this past Monday, yesterday at 7:00 AM. It was anticipated to last for approximately three weeks, although they are making significant progress. It's coming down rapidly. Residents of the Sanford Mill as well as the business owners were previously notified of the modified use of the parking lot behind Sanford Mill between the hours of 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM. That has changed, as there were two large cranes that occupy the entry-exit points of the area, including Pioneer Avenue is in the fall zone. So Pioneer was closed as well. Short-term disruption is necessary to complete the demolition and move forward, ultimately towards the removal of the boilerhouse structure itself and the creation of future increased parking opportunities. We can fit approximately 67 new land parking slots there.
Steve, are we going to have to get an engineer to look at that wall that's on the backside of the road, Pioneer Road?
We already, we already have that assessment.
Okay, good.
So not different, not dissimilar from when we tore down the Aerofab factory that is the parking lot that's there now? They did an engineered assessment on that. They did some bracing and hit it with shotcrete, stabilized that. We have an engineered assessment for, there are actually larger buttresses inside of the boilerhouse, some of which may be retained as part of the overall stabilization.
All right. Thank you. That's one of the questions I get asked the most, so.
Yeah, we won't let the road fall over. I received an update from Director Househeel last night. He said after the first day of demolition, due to safety concerns identified, the parking lot access was not reopened Monday evening. Once the cap was removed, and we've all seen the aerial photos that we have from the cap down, it was discovered that the upper portion of the stack was only two courses of brick thick. I assumed at least four courses, right? It's only two courses of brick thick, and only one course thick in the window pattern or the, the window pattern. So you had the indentations, there was a single course of brick, and they had longitudinal cracking down the length of those single courses. So the decision was made rapidly to not allow for access until they got below those points and got to a more stabilized piece. So we'll be reevaluating that on a day-by-day basis, and communications continue with the residents and the businesses within the Sanford Mill. Piece of good news, the city is up for an EECBG grant. We've been notified that it qualifies for an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant in the amount of $75,730. Director Househeel is working with the program to provide future options to the city council to consider, such as funding towards the LED streetlights, improvements or future improvements, EV charging stations, EV vehicles, energy efficiency work on our public facilities, solar, and other areas. It appears that the funds will be available for the ensuing fiscal year. And once the city council votes on the application and acceptance of said funds, we can move forward. Next to the last item is the State Land Bank. Community Development Director Ian Househeel was a lead advocate for the creation of the State Land Bank that passed last year. The governor appointed Director Househeel to serve on the State Land Bank, and he was confirmed by the Senate on March 30th. The charge is to stand up the new state agency for the specific purpose of making properties ready for redevelopment that would otherwise continue to languish. The agency has an annual appropriation of $3 million collected from construction and demolition debris fees at time of disposal. The State Land Bank will further qualify for federal funds to aid in addressing derelict properties in our state and move them towards much-needed redevelopment for housing. So it takes the land bank program that we have here, and it amplifies that to the state level. The significant piece is the huge amount of federal resources that are out there for this and other areas. I attended a manager's conference last Friday. I don't know what month of the year it is right now, but, but we had several hours of education just on the American Infrastructure Act and where all of these pots of money are hiding and how to better locate them and start to extract from them. So not dissimilar from the RACE grant that we were awarded, not dissimilar from the work on the SS4A grant that our departmental staff met on last week in this room with Patrick Adams, formerly of MDOT, now with the Federal Highway Authority. It's good to keep your friends when they move up the ranks, right? So the SS4A will allow us to extract after we do the safety engineering on that. There's, there's $1 billion a year put into that fund for which we can submit projects of anywhere from 200,000 to 50 million, once we extract it out of our book. So we're looking forward to that. And then the last shout-out I'd like to give is to recognition to the police department. This week, they're hosting an FBI leadership training in the police department's training facilities. The department seeks to have all ranking officers trained in the leadership program to improve the administrative operations of the department. In exchange for hosting, the city received four training slots at a cost of approximately $800 per unit for hosting the 34 other participants in the class. We currently have Officers Allen, Murphy, Brown, and Beegan currently in the class. Thank you.
Any questions? Ann?
I just have one question going back, Steve, to the LD regarding the increase from 5% to 7% for public safety. Is there any clarity on if that might be used for infrastructure facility?
It can be used for infrastructure, so my first thought process was that service.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Fantastic. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. Communication Presentations, 23-136-01, a presentation of the ACE Camp 2023 Sea Coast at the Sanford Sea Coast Regional Airport, August 9th through 12th. And is this, you are so fast. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
She actually meandered.
Okay, I'm a slow reader.
Good evening. My name's Allison Navia. I'm the manager of our Sanford Sea Coast Regional Airport. Pleased to come to you tonight to present with a couple of guests a very nice development that we have at the airport this year. It is the ACE Camp. ACE Camp is an aviation-themed camp at various locations in Maine. This year, we're proud to announce a new third location, and that's at our airport here in Sanford. With us tonight is Tim Lasage. He is the president of ACE Camp, and Parker Montano, also Rob Montgomery. So everybody, everybody who's instrumental in making this happen is here. We want to tell you a little bit about the history of ACE Camp and then how we came to have it down here in Maine, what it entails, and how people can sign up if they want to. So Tim, everybody, gather round.
How you doing, Steve? Long time no see. As Allison said, I'm Tim Lasage, and that's Tim with one T, not 10. Steve should remember that from a long time ago. I do have a slight speech impediment, so whatever I say tonight, if I start stuttering, Allison knows the whole speech, so she's going to finish the word and we get out of here on time. We all good? Okay. So what I'm here to talk about this evening is Maine ACE Camp. ACE is an acronym for Aviation Career Education. We've had a Maine ACE Camp in Maine for about 25 years or so. It started up in the Bangor area, and our job is to get young people involved in aviation. And a lot of people think it's about pilots, and I'm here to tell you, I'm not a pilot, never have been, and whether I will be or not in the future is kind of immaterial, but it's about the careers in aviation and how it's so needed. So 25 years ago, we started with one camp out of the Bangor area, then it branched down to the Portland area as well for younger kids. So the Bangor ACE Camp, we actually call it Maine ACE Camp North. That is for high school students only, and it's a week-long camp. You show up on Sunday, parents drop you off, and then the parents come back and get you on Saturday. The Portland Camp, we moved up to Brunswick, and we started calling it Maine ACE Camp South a number of years ago, probably about eight or nine years ago at this point. I'm actually also the director of Maine ACE Camp Midcoast. We had to rename it because of some great and exciting news out of your lovely town. So I'd like to introduce to you a former ACE Camp student of mine from ACE Camp South who went on from becoming a camper with us to a counselor with me, to owning pine tree helicopters right here at the Sanford Airport, Parker Montano. So Parker, if you want to join me up for a moment? So Parker was a kid when I first met him.
He still is.
Any white hair from here? Parker's fault.
He was a lot younger, too.
Yeah. So Parker started talking to me about a year or so ago. We took a hiatus with Maine ACE Camp for a couple of years because of the C-word that we don't, nobody likes to talk about. We go to a lot of different places. We're not just a camp. We travel, so we get to take the kids up, or I took Parker up into the tower at the jet port. There are two sections to the tower, people don't know about it. We take them up in there. We take them behind the scenes at TSA so they get to see how your baggage gets handled. You drop it off, we see where it went and what happens to it. We take them to the ARF station, the firefighters here. You guys, love you guys, I was one way back in the day, but y'all get to play with multiple people on one truck. Fire stations we play with on airports, one person, one truck. It's an awesome piece of equipment, and that's why we show the kids what you do on airports. We get to take them up in airplanes, seaplanes, and all sorts of stuff. So the great news is Parker got all excited about it, came to me. Maine ACE Camp, we're actually a nonprofit. With Parker's help and Rob's help, we're now opening Maine ACE Camp Sea Coast. So you guys now have your own day camp. Your Sea Coast camp in Midcoast are day camps for kids. These are meant for 11 to 16, younger kids. Be like 7:00 in the morning to, 7:30 in the morning, 6:00 at night. So it's quite an exciting and eventful day for the kids. I believe we're setting up on your agenda for rides in private aircraft, seaplane rides, and other awesome events. They're working on the agenda now, so I'll be, I'll be down here helping with them. So I'll kind of be shadowing. This is their first year, so we want to help this fledgling group hit the ground running. And Rob Montgomery, if you guys haven't met him, I just met Rob a couple months ago online. Parker I've known for far too long, but I'm very excited about this opportunity for you guys. If you guys have kids, 11 to 16, Maine ACE Camp South, we're looking at a $500 registration for kids. Maine ACE Camp North, we hope kids from the two day camps graduate to the North and spend all week with them. The kids at North, and Parker's done this, I believe, with me, I take my time and I help North camp for a couple days. We get to play with the Maine Air and Army National Guards up there, hence we get to fly in the refuelers. Kids get to lay down with the boom operators, see F-16s or F-35s come up, get fuel, and then they get to go in a Blackhawk helicopter when they're at ACE Camp North. If you don't think we have fun, if it ain't fun, we don't do it. So we're just, I'd say, big kids that inhabit old people's bodies at this point, but I'm excited for you guys. I know Parker is. Registration is online, mainacecamp.org. Go up that, send us an email. There's registration packets online for all three camps. Don't be afraid to send your kids to Bangor. Real good folks up there as well.
What about opportunities for scholarship positions?
There is. We do offer like half scholarships, so like $250 scholarships, so there's applications online at our website for more information about that, and that'll either be half at one of the day camps or half at North. We do work with EAA chapters, Experimental Aircraft Owners Association, sorry, who offer, some of these associations offer 100% scholarships directly to the kids. Maine ACE Camp, we offer 50 so we can share it with more and more kids. So if anybody wants to talk to me directly more about it, Allison's got my number, Parker's got my number unfortunately, but we'd be happy to talk to any kids individually.
Where does the seaplanes take off and land?
So for Midcoast, we take them over to Mascove Seaplane Base in Naples, which is on Long Pond. Pushoff Pond was up in Bangor. That was a privately-owned seaplane base, and the gentleman sold it, so I think they're going to start landing near the Old Town Airport, which has a seaplane base. Down here, we're working with. Down here, we're working with...
Down here, we have not made the arrangements yet, but we're trying to get in down at Monday.
Okay. And that's big enough?
A lot of seaplanes are actually amphibious, so we may be able to park straight from the airport.
Okay. Sounds fantastic. My big question is, my husband just turned 70, can I sign him up?
I don't know, do you guys have opportunities for counselors?
Anyone have a question?
We do have a lot of parents that do want to help us out. I know in, in Mid Coast, we invite the parents to join us on Saturday, all day.
I never said he would help.
What's that?
He would not be a help.
When I first started, I'm not sure they thought I was a big help either. But no, it's, it's a fantastic opportunity. So again, mainacecamp.org, send us an email. You'll notice a familiar name if you do go to that for registration. My wife is actually the, as she says it, the glorified paper pusher. As I say it, it's more of the administrative assistant to keep all of us directors and counselors in line, so.
Excellent. Any questions? Jonathan?
I just wanted to say that this sounds like a great program. Thank you very much for bringing this to our area. Are you involved with the Civil Air Patrol groups at all, as far as pulling in some people from that, or?
We don't have a direct line to them. We do have the Civil Air Patrol members do occasionally do presentations. A couple of their Civil Air Patrol pilots will bring their private aircraft to the, to the days where we have pilots come in to give kids rides. So every kid that we go, every kid that comes in, we try to get them up in the air, obviously, that's weather permitting.
Sure.
It's all about the safety for kids, so.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we need the public participation sheet. Are you going to get to here? Thank you. Raymond, you want to come up and introduce yourself and where you live, please?
Raymond Keen, I own property at 7 Dorrington Avenue here in Sanford. I'd like to speak a little bit about the fire marshal's position. Now, in the interest of full disclosure, I am a retired Sanford firefighter, though I am wearing the hat of a Sanford taxpayer as I speak. The fire marshal's position in this city has been a bone of contention more than once. History is certainly rhyming here, as this discussion has taken multiple forms over the years, and it has always come down to the money. The position exists for the safety of the citizens of Sanford, and this costs money. Safety standards aren't cheap, which is why business owners chafe at them. History is rife with the death tolls associated with not following standards, and the lawsuits that inevitably result are costly in terms of not just money, but human lives. And as much as the council may not like to admit it, the fire marshal's position actually brings money into the city. This happens because site plans are reviewed and approved much quicker than the state can perform that task. This allows a business to bring jobs and taxes into the city on a much quicker basis. A staffed fire marshal's office allows for local control. How much sooner was Eldridge Lumber able to open the doors because of a local fire marshal? Now, as much as I would like to not attach a name to this, I find I have to. Patrick Carter has gone above and beyond for the fire department on many occasions. Is the council aware that Mr. Carter was able to secure funding through a grant for a UTV that has become a valuable piece of equipment? This was approximately $45,000 that wasn't obtained through taxes. This effort provided the line personnel with more tools to serve the public. The city was more than happy to accept this grant. Now additionally, he has handled a great deal of public education for the city. This is one of those times that the statement "It's for the children" is actually true. The fire department has documented cases of the value of this education, as young children have called 911 for help and used the tools the fire department gave them. Now, Mr. Carter is heavily credentialed for his job, and it's his expertise that matters to the position. The monies associated with the position have historically been viewed as burdensome to the city, when the reality is just the opposite. And the city has invested taxpayer money to help the fire marshal obtain the credentials to serve the citizens of Sanford. Counselors, right now, I see this as your chance to bring an end to the continual revisiting of the value of the fire marshal position. This isn't about the position being in the union contract, this is about providing services to the citizens of Sanford, so that the city is safer. In the vein of following the money, I ask who benefits from not funding this position? How much will my taxes go down, or is the money being redirected to something else? The five cents per $1,000 evaluation on my home will save me a whopping $7.25. This won't cover the increase to my homeowner's insurance that will inevitably happen because the city doesn't have a fire marshal. Maybe the better question here is, who loses if this position isn't funded? I'll give my answer, every person in this city, a category that includes every member of the council. Now, my last point is to give my answer to the question Counselor Hanselman asked of Captain Watkins, as far as the choice between buildings and personnel. Buildings and personnel are mutually exclusive issues, and the two should not be conflated.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
We, we don't share back and forth with the public.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
All right.
I probably should have explained that in the beginning.
You'll be here all May.
Yeah. Thank you. And just to let people know, because we have some new people here who aren't used to this, under public participation, you present, and tonight it's going to be two minutes, and we don't respond because we're hearing one side of whatever the presentation is. And so lots of times, there are two sides, and if we responded, people might think we're agreeing or not. So we don't do a discussion, and if it's something that we need to put on the agenda, then we put it on the agenda for further debate. All right. Steve?
Two quick things, you're probably tired of seeing me. Steve Benati, 514 Newdam Road. Number one, Garbage to Gardens started today, of which I've signed up, I think, and I was real excited about what we found about this early on, and I came home today and somebody had a political sign on my front lawn, and I said, "Who the hell did this without my permission?" And then I forgot I agreed to put a sign up on my lawn to advertise Garbage to Gardens. So anyway, I got my first green bucket, and looking forward to making use of it, and, you know, because we recycle a lot and everything. The other thing is, I just want to hope to clarify some of the miscommunication that's going on when it comes to the CIP versus the personnel side of things, and that it gets skewed. And I think it was, I don't think it was right that Anne asked the fire department, "Which would you pick? You know, would you rather have new fire stations or a fire marshal?" It's like asking a parent who loves all their children, "Which one's your favorite?", or something. So going forward, it's the city's responsibility to manage infrastructure. It's the city's responsibility to bring programs forward. It's not the fire department's problem or fault that their facilities have been deteriorating, 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 and nobody looked at it, and nobody took issue with it, until we came up with a plan, you know, when we started working with the architect firm that we did, and we've been working at this for a long time, it's been plus, seven plus years for some of us. So I don't think it's fair to throw that back on the fire department now to say, "Which would you rather have?" The fire stations are for the city's benefit, and they're for the firefighter's benefit too, in the respect that the health conditions of which the guys work in are horrible right now, and those buildings need to go away as soon as possible. And the women that work in our department are severely, they don't have the facilities. They don't have the, clear and simple. Title IX across the board, they don't have access to what's going on with that sort of stuff. So that being said, I just wish that we can look at it and say, yes, they are expensive, but don't blur the lines. So thank you for the time.
And in case people are wondering, I think most of you are firefighters, so you know, but Steve's been a big part of helping us choose land and getting this whole thing diagrams, so we could see what the buildings would look like. He's been a big pusher for this, and a big promoter of the need for fired stations. So thank you, Steve. The next person is Matthew.
Matthew Leggett, president of the Sanford Maine ATV Club. I just wanted to come up here because ATV season is coming up quickly. Trails open around the May 15th time, so I just wanted to bring everyone aware that ATV season is starting, and talk about for a moment the importance of the Sanford ATV Club. We've done so much since 2018, and I just really wanted to explain what we've done. We've been in town doing 4th of July parades, involved with handing out candy to kids. We've done the festivities down at the pond, just bringing awareness to education for ATV safety. The past three years, we've held four classes so far. We have two classes, April 29th and May 6th coming up. They're filled already, 70 kids, between the ages of 10 and 16 are in that class. Most of them are from Sanford. So educating the community on respecting land, riding their ATV correctly. We were involved with helping a member of the community who was injured on an ATV in 2019. We were able to make a $5,000 donation towards that family when we did a, a community ride. I just want to explain that we, we really need, in order to be an ATV club in Sanford, we need a trail, and the trail is the rail trail in Sanford. I know we talked about this back in December, and the vote was to close the trail to ATV access. I'm hoping to bring that back to the agenda and talk about it one more time. The rail trail policy was made, I think, in a great way. We had 12 members on that rail trail policy, from snowmobilers, equestrians, walkers, bikers. That group of people came together and said, "Yes, we can use the rail trail together, and this is the way we can do it." And that task force gave the council a way to move forward and use that rail trail. We had six months to implement a list, I think it was 30 pages long from the task force. Steve Buck had it condensed into one page, and so I'm hoping we can, we can go back to that rail trail policy and discuss it.
Thank you, Matt. Zachary?
Are you all Zachary?
Zach, I'm Bob Cody. I'm the owner of the Sea Coast Warhawks. We're a semi-pro football team that just moved to town here. We're coming from...
Pete made you come?
Yeah, he did.
He talked about you all the time.
Yeah. We just moved from Dover, New Hampshire, we were playing there, we're going to our fifth season, but we just moved to town, going to be playing at the, the high school. Pretty, pretty nice facility you guys have, we're really excited about it. Like I said, my, my name's Bob Cody, I'm the owner, middle linebacker of the team. Zach Sherland, he's the head coach and general manager, and Paul St. Pierre is the offensive coordinator. We've got a staff of eight coaches, high school, they're, they're all high school coaches in Maine and New Hampshire. It's an 18-plus league, obviously, for, for adults here that want to continue to play football. We're, like I said, we'll be playing Saturday night, 7:00 PM, at the high school is our first home, home, home game, and then we've got the 29th of April, we'll be back here in town for another home game. So just wanted to come out and introduce ourselves to you guys, and definitely appreciative that we were able to, to work it out, and, and we're excited to, you know, be here in town for, for a long time, so.
All right. Thank you.
Awesome. Congrats.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Any, any question? Well, you can't do questions.
We'll ask Pete, and he'll ask you.
Now for public hearings. The city council will take a public comment on the following. 23-142-01, a public hearing to hear comments in favor or, and I guess I have to say this hearing is open, a public hearing to hear comments in favor or against a proposed zone change for 3 Hanson's Ridge Road Parcel, M28-7, 27. All those, is there anybody in favor to speak? Anybody opposed? This hearing is closed. 23-143-01, a public hearing to hear the comments in favor or against a proposed zone change for 26 Robert Street Parcel, K30-12. All those in favor? Anyone here to speak in favor? Open the hearing. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? This hearing is closed. 23-128-01, continuation of joint public hearing, city council and school committee. So I'm assuming we don't do the in favor or against, we just...
Yeah, I know it's...
We just talk.
Is anybody here to speak about the budget? Who hasn't already, like, public comment?
Anyone else to speak about the budget at this time?
Because there was something talking about coming about the school budget, but I don't see.
So this isn't where we talk about the whole budget? We got to do it down below?
No, we actually continued the public hearing from the mid-March public hearing, just in case, after hearing more detail, people wanted to speak at this meeting, only as a courtesy, because...
But nobody wants, okay.
No, they typically don't have many.
All right. Thank you. This hearing is closed. There's nothing on consent agenda, nothing on old business, new business?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to propose that we swap the last two items on the agenda, that we fill the city council seat after we take action on the municipal and school budgets, so we don't put this new city councillor in a position of having to work on a budget they really have not worked on yet, so.
Do I have a second on that? Jonathan, all those in favor? I guess that would have been pretty cruel to have the person vote, do the budget immediately. 23-109-01, order to approve the designation of a permanent aerobatic box at the Sanford Sea Coast Regional Airport.
Here I am again. She's there again.
She's doing it on purpose.
Yep. Again, I'm Allison Navia, I'm your manager of Sanford Sea Coast Regional Airport. This item may look familiar to some of you that have been on the council for a while, because these have been going on at the airport for over a decade. And Jay Hewitt is on the line, he's on the Zoom call, in case you have any particular questions that he can help with. Jay is a member of the New England Aerobatic Club, and I've worked with him for the 10 years that I've been here to organize multiple aerobatic practices at the airport. So the New England Aerobatic Club, they are formed, and then they go from airport to airport around the New England region, and they host these practices. This requires a modification of airspace, because typically, the airport is open for people just to be coming and going and practicing. So this actually closes a portion of the airspace, and it creates what's called the aerobatic box. So this is an imaginary surface, it's three-dimensional, and what we've had to do in the past is every time we do that, we have to apply to FAA, and as you see in the packet, it's about 30 pages of paperwork, to create a temporary aerobatic box. Then I come before the council, we approve doing it, and go through all the details, and we do that every time. What we propose now to just streamline things and make it easier is that it's the same way every single time, and we would like to get a permanent aerobatic box set up with FAA, and then from there, what we'll do is default to what the council has approved in the past, which is to designate the approval of events to the city manager and airport manager, so that we don't have to bring it to the council and take up time every single time. What I've told the aerobatic club is that we would do a maximum of two practices a year, which is what we've done in the past. Usually, it's, it's one a year, and it'll be a rain date. One of the good benefits of the, our airport here in Sanford is that this can take place largely over our own property. So when you look at the map, it's mostly over, over the solar project where this is taking place. It is a unique... It is a unique, different kind of noise that happens with this. So, what ends up happening is we'll do a briefing with the pilots at the beginning of the day about how it's gonna go. They have their list, and they all practice. It's called the known. It's really cool. It has all these designs to it. And that tells them you're gonna go from a cubanate into a hammerhead, barrel roll, and they all practice the same thing, and they get judged, and they get feedback as they go through. Then I'm designated as the air boss for that, so I'm maintaining kind of like a semi-air traffic control to provide advisories to pilots, because we have to change and reroute the airspace for that period of time. So, each, each pilot goes up, they practice in the box for ten or fifteen minutes, and then they swap out. So, we have a really organized streamlined way that, way that that operates. We have it down to a well-oiled machine. So, what I'm asking for approval for tonight is just the ability to designate a permanent box, and then that's by no means saying this is gonna happen all the time. It would still be limited and have to go through approval through the city manager each time that the aerobatic practice was requested to happen.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Ann?
I'll approve the motion, Madam Mayor, for the permanent aerobatics box.
Second, Jonathan?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Jonathan?
I just have a question. I noticed the box is partially over what looks like a small body of water. I don't know how deep that is, but-
I think that's the solar things.
No, there's to the-
There's a little man-made pond that's off airport property.
Is that, how deep is that, and is that a concern if there was an accident or something? And could that box be kind of rotated a little bit so that's outside of that, where that pond is?
Jay, do you want to speak to that? Is it a concern to be flying over a small body of water? That's been there for quite some time, and I don't think it's very deep. It's man-made.
Okay.
It's like the back of a personal gravel pit type situation.
Is he on Zoom or something?
Jay? Oh, he's muted again. Oh, there he goes. You can ask your question, Allison. Did he hear it? Jay, did you hear the question?
I might be having some technical difficulties.
Yeah, I think he is.
I don't think it's a concern. The box has been the exact same box we've used for the last decade or so, or more.
Is it, is it flying over Pete's house, so we can go there and watch?
Other direction.
I believe I have been unmuted, and I will confirm that that small pond is not a concern to us.
Okay, great.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ann? I just have one question. Do you have a shirt that says "Air Boss"? Because I think that would be awesome. I'll work on that.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
All right, the next is twenty-three, one, three, four, dash, zero-one, order to sign the municipal warrant, calling for the school budget validation referendum election to be held Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, at the three designated poll locations in Sanford and Springville, and for the polls to be opened at eight AM and closed at eight PM. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make that motion and just let everybody know, this is not about what the number's gonna be on the validation, just about calling the vote. So, I'll make the motion to call the vote for the school budget validation referendum.
Second, Jonathan? All those in favor? Excellent. The next is twenty-three, one thirty-eight, dash, zero-one, in order to authorize the city manager to sign and amend memorandum of understanding with the Sanford Police Association to authorize changes to the collective bargaining agreement regarding in-service retirement program and promotional progress, process. Do I have a motion? Pete?
Yes, motion to push forward.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Matt.
Thank you. And do we have any discussion? And who's the person? Anyone to speak on it, or?
Chief Henderson will come, come forward and address this. There is some correction to the materials that were put into your packet this evening, and I'd like him to cover that as well.
Thank you, Craig.
Good evening. Thank you. So, basically, what we're going to do is make small adjustments to the current contract so that we can better retain some employees that may want to return to work. And this is a relatively new program. We've collaborated with Stacy Howes in HR and the city manager's office, and certainly with the Sanford Police Association, to may, have an opportunity created for folks that want to come back to work after they've retired. We've only done this with two people, so we're kind of learning each time, and Stacy and I are pretty well-connected on this. What we, what we learned the last time was, one of the rules that we're asking to change is to eliminate a notice that employees would have to provide to the city, and this is in your packet, that all applications for a rehire would have to be done a hundred and twenty days prior to leaving the city's service. We want to eliminate that. And the reason why we want to do that is some folks retire, and then after a few months, they decide, jeez, this isn't, retirement isn't what I thought it was gonna be, and they want to return to us. And that happened. We had to make some changes to allow that person to come back, and it was great that we could. We retained an extremely valuable employee for an extra year, and we think that we will continue to benefit if we can eliminate that part out and not have the employee have to give a notice. It is what it is. If they want to come back, they come back. If they don't want to come back, they don't have to. So, that's the first adjustment that we're looking to make. The other adjustment was, is with the promotional process. I'm gonna hand you the new material. So, this, it was a little complicated. When we reviewed the packet, we noticed that it was, at the top of your packet, it'll say promotional process, and underneath in parentheses, it says lieutenant, but really, it was the sergeant's process that we're going to adjust. And they're located in the same area of the contract. You would just have to scroll down to find that. So, it can be a little confusing. What we did is, we highlighted the criteria that we want to change. You'll notice under criteria, it says a certified police officer for a period of at least four years, the last two being with the Sanford Police Department. And what the Sanford Police Association wanted to accomplish, as well as the administration and the city manager's office, is to broaden the number of, of potential people to be promoted. So, in the past, you had to have a total of four years of service all with the Sanford Police Department. But because we've recruited from other agencies, we have quite a few experienced folks who won't have four years of experience with the Sanford Police Department, but have four, five, eight, some as many as nineteen years with other agencies. We didn't want to eliminate them from being part of the promotional process. They're very valuable and experienced officers. We wanted to give them an opportunity to be promoted as well. So, the Police Association worked very hard with their, within their union, and they agreed, or they came to the idea that they would like only two years need to be with the Sanford Police Department out of their four years of total service. I think this is a great idea. It opens the door for more officers to, to make that next step up into the leadership program. So, that's really, that's the bulk of it, but if you, if you move to the page, the last, well, the second to last page of the document, you'll see that there were some points that could be awarded during this process, and there's lines through a number of them, and below that, there is a new set of points. That's the, basically, the red line copy, and essentially, that's an update. There, there were, there were points awarded for things that we just don't do anymore, like the dare officer. We don't have a dare program anymore. And so, the Police Association felt that we should better align, realign what we wanted to do with points. We felt it was important that they have buy-in and input in this, and really, it's, it's their promotion process as well, right? And so, we wanted them to be able to select, hey, what's important for you that you feel would be good for a supervisor? And how do we award that for future leaders of the agency? So, you see that the, the red, the red line just crossed out. It's not red, but you know what I mean? And the new set is below that, and again, that's been vetted through Stacy Howes in HR and the city manager's office, and we've had discussions about this, and we feel this is a really good representation of what we want to see for a background to award points during a promotional process. So, we're looking for the council just to bless these two changes, and we anticipate that we will start a sergeant's promotional process. Well, I would anticipate a notice will go out either the end of this month or the first of next month, depending on, on how fast we can organize this.
Hold on, waiting to see if we had a, okay, we did. We already had a first and a second. Steve, do you have a comment to make?
Just wanted to make sure that this, that, that we're clear, that this is a pre-existing memorandum of understanding. It's the two areas that are being addressed for modification as the city council had previously approved. The MOU, I'm seeking the council to approve it, the modifications there too, and the intent is to negotiate this as part of the next CBA, as was intended with the original MOU. Thank you.
So, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is twenty-three, one thirty-nine, dash, zero-one, order to approve a proposed zone change for parcel M twenty-eight, twenty-seven, three Hanson's Ridge Road. This item must be read in two occasions. This is the first reading. Bob?
Just wanted to say these, both of these, this and the next agenda item, came out of the zoning committee with unanimous consent to approve.
Any other comments? Do I have a, a motion?
Yeah, it's the first reading.
Oh, it's the first reading?
Yeah.
Okay. Never mind. You don't need a motion. All right, and the second one's the same. Twenty-three, one forty, zero-one, in order to approve a proposed zone change for parcel K thirty dash twelve dash twenty-six, Robert Street. This item must be read on two occasions. This is the first reading. Any questions? Comments? Okay, moving on. We've just flipped the last two items. Oh, wait a second. Sorry, I missed one. All right, we're going to do twenty-three, one forty-six, dash, zero-one. This is why Sue is here. A proclamation in recognition of the fifty-fourth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, which is April thirtieth through May sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
Am I gonna read it first and then have some comment?
Yes, we're gonna read down through there, and then I'll read that part.
Whereas the office, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in the education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk.
Now, therefore I, Becky A. Brink, mayor of Sanford, Maine, do recognize the week of April thirtieth through May sixth, twenty-twenty-three, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Sue H. Cody and her staff, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they represent, dated this eighteenth day of April, twenty-twenty-three.
Except it's the fourth.
Oh.
I thought your agenda might have been a little too busy this evening for this proclamation.
No, exactly.
I was going to put it on the next meeting.
She'll print out a new copy, so we'll, Sue, do you want to speak about this? And by the way, thank you.
Thank you.
We know how valuable you are.
Thank you very much. Sue Cody, city clerk, for just about thirty-five years here in Sanford. This is more for my staff and other clerks across the state than for myself. I am, I just like to be sitting in my office, doing my work, keeping the flow going, and I don't need the spotlight and recognition. I just want everything to go smoothly and everybody be happy as much as possible. But since I joined the Maine Town and City Clerks Association Executive Board, a three-year term, this is my second year, and they throw you on various committees to get you into different activities. So, this year, my task is Public Relations Committee. One of our jobs is promoting the Municipal Clerks Week. This was initiated back in nineteen sixty-nine by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and it is endorsed by all of its members throughout the United States, Canada, and fifteen other countries. In nineteen ninety, excuse me, nineteen eighty-four, and again in nineteen ninety-four, Presidents Ronald Reagan and Bill Clinton respectively signed a proclamation officially declaring Professional Municipal Clerks Week the first full week of May, and recognizing the essential role municipal clerks play in local government. Just a few highlights of the history of municipal clerks. You may or may not know, it is the oldest public servant in local government, along with a tax collector. The profession traces back to before biblical times. Early keepers of the archives were often called remembrancers, because reading and writing was not a thing that a lot of people were able to do, so they had to use their memory to keep track of public records. Imagine if we had to do that today.
Oh, my God. You could do it, Sue.
Well, I do have a lot of information up there, but the title of clerk as we know it is developed from the Latin clericus. During the Middle Ages, when scholarship and writing were limited to just clergy, the clerk became, came to a mean scholar, especially one who could read, write, and thus serve as a notary, secretary, accountant, and recorder. In the early colonial times, when Americas first came to this country, they were setting up local governments, which they had been accustomed to in their other countries, the office of the clerk was one of the first to be established. And when the colonists first settled in Plymouth, Massachusetts, they quickly appointed a person to act as a recorder. That person kept all of the vital records for birth, marriages, and deaths for the church, as well as various other records of appointments, deeds, meetings, and election of officers at the annual town meeting. Some of this stuff we're still doing today. Lastly, over the years, municipal clerks have become the hub of government. They serve as a direct link between inhabitants of their communities and their government. Professor William Bennett Monroe wrote in one of the first textbooks on municipal administration back in nineteen thirty-four about the municipal clerk. Its work is not spectacular, but it demands versatility, alertness, accuracy, and no end of patience. Is that not true? Thank you very much.
Do I have a motion for the proclamation, please? And the second is Ann, and then Pete, and everyone. All right?
Thank you.
And Sue, thank you very much for all that you do.
Congratulations.
And Sue, are you staying to swear in our new council when we're- And Sue, are you staying to swear in our new council when we're?
If we can come to a decision?
Thank you.
I have three of them because I have no idea.
Neither do we. Okay, so now we're going to, different order, we're going to do 23-147-01, "Order to take action on the FY 2324 municipal and school budgets." And Steve, I?
We start with the school and see if they can?
And Steve, I think had a thing he was going to put up for us to see, too.
I'm relying upon Ben to shift our technology around here. Thank you, Ben. These were the adjustments that we were discussed here this evening between the city council and the board of education. All of those amendments are here, and they've been carried through. That has produced a bottom line change to the net assessment of taxation, a reduction of $776,859. It would allow for the following amendments to be done. This was the original budget that was, that was here. Excuse me, started at net call for taxation of $171,000, $17,187,286, an increase year over year of $1,709,441, or 11.04%. Pursuant to the adjustments that have been worked on this evening at the city council level in cooperation with the school board, we're down to a net call of taxation of $16,410,427, an increase of $932,582 year over year, or 6.03%.
Bob?
So I'm prepared to read the number for the, for the school budget?
We'll do the expenses, the revenue, and the next.
The three. Yep, go ahead, Bob.
That's why I wrote them down. If you'd like to make a motion, I'm.
Sure. What's the, what's the final number?
The three.
The three of them.
The revenue and that.
Okay, all right. So I'll move, we approve for the school department expenses. We've got to put commas in here.
I knew it was $61 million.
And for revenue, $451?
$45.
Excuse, no, wait a minute. Glad you're here, Maury. Would have got a lot more than you were anticipating in revenue.
I'm going to put the commas in for you.
Thanks. I have new glasses here, so that's part of the issue.
Plus my hand.
So, and this is for net to be raised, $16,364,041, or $41. Is that accurate, asking the school department, or Ronnie? Those are accurate numbers?
Shouldn't there be? You can't put minimum funds, upper funds in each other. You have also a revenue, but it's a thousand.
No, because of that legality, I wasn't questioning that. What I was questioning is how this is being treated in the sheet.
That's, that's correct. That's a thousand.
Correct. So that produces the appropriate bottom line of a reduction, right?
Six thousand.
Right. So can, can we confer these numbers on the, on this, this sheet? Does it mean accurate? Which one needs to be updated?
No, the revenue needs to go to $45,76,634. Is that correct? Okay. So is that a friendly amendment, Bob?
That's a friendly amendment.
Which leads us to 16, net to be raised by taxation of $16,410,427?
Another amendment?
Yeah, another amendment. But it's on the record. Larissa has it. Okay, I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Please help more.
Oh, any other discussion?
On the school budget?
Jonathan?
Yeah, I was just questioning what, what he was asking.
Are you all set?
I didn't follow what he was asking to change.
It was just where, where you could book revenue of a certain type, so we have to make sure that when we're putting the refer, the election out, it has to have the proper expense number, the proper revenue number, and then proper net to be raised by taxation. And the $46,000 had to be treated differently, so that's why, that's what Ronnie was confirming.
All right, thank you.
Are we all set now? All those in favor? Thank you. You're all set?
Who was our second?
I did. Okay. Because I made all the changes, signed the second.
Right. The bottom line. Okay. Do you have a comment to make?
Yeah, I was wondering what the difference would be in that bottom line if we took out those three ESER positions. Likely not a whole lot based on that $45 million, but just wanted to see what that would look like.
From expenses or revenues?
From the, the three ESER positions, the 307.
I'm confused.
So you're looking to reduce this, Jonathan, by $307,451?
I'd like to see what those numbers look like. I still think that 6% or over 6% is.
You want to take those numbers out and then look at it, right? You want to?
I'd like to see, yeah, I'd like to see what it looks like with that number out. So, can we do that?
Before we do this exercise, is there anybody else who wants to try to get the number lower for the school department?
I do not want to get the number lower. They met our, they were greater than our expectation. We asked them to reduce their budget by $700,000, and they reduced it by, what, $730-something-thousand?
$77.
Seventy-seven, yeah. $776, by way more than what we even asked for, so I would not be in favor of that.
But I don't mind the exercise, I just want to make sure that, you know, we have enough people who are thinking this way.
Okay. I mean, I could run the numbers on the side, but I was just curious.
And keep the spreadsheet.
I still, I still think, I still think it's too high, so I'm going to vote against it.
It's, it's, it's high, but it's also going to.
But it won't make any difference as far as the outcome.
And he's doing them really quickly here, but it brings it to 4%. The loss of those ESER position.
And I, I don't disagree, Council Martell, with it being high, especially when you look at the historical net tax commitment being, and again, 2.37 historically. So it is up certainly, but I guess my concern is that early on in the process, we indicated around $700,000 being a goal point. So I, if, if that was your feeling, I wish we had had those discussions earlier. Do you know what I mean? If, if you would have pushed for a greater reduction, it might have been.
Well, we also had discussions around being somewhere around 4% as well, so I understand it's a difficult year, and, you know, that's just my opinion as far as what can come out, where, where I'd like to be, just based on feedback I'm seeing. But this is certainly a lot better than the, what was it, 20% that we started out at, so.
Right.
I appreciate all the hard work that the school board has put in, so thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
We need to take.
Do you still want to take your, retake your vote? Would you like to vote again? It's up to you.
Yes, I would like to, if that's okay.
Okay, so all those in favor? And all those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next on to the municipal, which I think goes to you, Steve, to show us that chart.
On the municipal side of the equation, so with the budget, with the adjustments that have been done on the school side, and what I anticipate to be done on the municipal side, we're looking at a change year over year of net taxation of 4.32%. It's a reduction of $1.6 million from where we started. The impacts, when you get down here and look at the positive outcome of the homestead, homestead piece, which increased by 3%, Eddy's going to change pursuant to the mill rate, a lower by $261,000, a lower overlay, there is an increase of $22,000 as far as the TIF, TIF account is concerned. We're looking at a year-over-year change going from $14.80 per thousand of value, of, of mill rate, to $15.14, which is 34 cents per thousand dollars of, on the tax bill, is a year-over-year change of 2.31%. As we discussed earlier, pursuant to the early assessments, estimates by our assessor, we're not going to see significant shifts within our taxable base this year. The value is going to hold relatively stable. I am accounting for just under $25 million worth of net tax, net new increase in valuation this year, so valuation's coming on for the first time. Based upon that 2.31%, the estimated impact is appearing here. You can see for our largest category of 1,124 homes, at the $200,000 range, each of these bars are calculated at the height of the range, it would be a net change for that homeowner at $200,000 tax card of $68.25 year over year, that's the 2.31%. It equates to $5.69 per month.
Steve, could we go back to the chart? I'm not clear on, because my printer thing was so small, I think I'm too old to read this size print. Could you tell me what are, what we took out? So could I see that chart bigger, please? I want to keep going on this if we need to add some things.
Yep. All right, so on the, looking at the sheet, we've, we've taken out $1,641,151 as compared to where we were last, last year, in comparison to the starting point.
We want to see the in, we want to see the in and outs from the, this chart.
The option sheet, I think this is what we're looking for.
The cut sheet, so I can see what's on.
Moving to the municipal side.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's hard for me to get all of this formatted. Here we go. So in here, here's what I've anticipated. We've picked up the additional $5,506 from the re-projection of our municipal revenue sharing. There's no other number to go on at this point in time as far as revenue sharing is concerned. Considered, I do believe our receipts continue to be stronger than anticipated, even according to the new projections. Hopefully, the state comes, I think, as far as their consideration of the supplemental budget pieces that they're working on now, they may re-project that. This could bring us a new number, but I don't have that at this point in time. Pursuant to the conversations that the council has had here, I'm trying to find consensus in there, I'm recommending to use an additional $100,000 of the undesignated fund balance. That would take us from $1 million to 1.1 million. I wouldn't recommend that indefinitely, but we definitely, based upon the examination of the fund balance that we saw earlier, you can absorb that impact to help offset other elements that were previously under consideration that have been taken on. This next line item, if the two paramedic positions at $198,000 cost, increase for the year to put those two, two positions in place, if those are left restored or left alone and not taken out of this budget, pursuant to the presentation and the analysis, I believe that we can bring in additional 12% of revenue by increasing from a BLS to an ALS licensure. That increase will, will hit our reimbursement rates under the Center for Medicare Services, so it impacts predominantly on Medicare piece, which also positively impacts our private insurance insurers without, so without changing the charge master, what we charge per call, you, you basically reduce your contractual allowances for those two entities, so that will.
So those two are in there now?
If it has an X in it, it's included in there.
If it has an X, it's included?
If it has an X beside it, it's now, it's, it's part of this analysis. If there's no X, the adjustment is not being made.
So it just means that that's.
So that, that revenue is put in there.
The X means it's out.
No, it's in.
So for, for revenue, but for expenses?
I'll get to the expenses in a moment. The X means that it's been implemented.
Okay, gotcha, got, okay.
It's in, it's in your book as an amendment. We talked about the full-time assessor. We're losing our contracted assessor at $64,000. We're going to go to a full-time position for this coming year. That's been supported in the budget, so neither of those have an X, so there's, there's no change there. So the full-time assessor's position is currently in your budget book, it stays. Discussion has gone to the two, two full-time firefighter, paramedics as part of the continued ramp-up. That would get us to the 50, and we, and still are looking for in the subsequent year for two more. That $198,890, if those two positions are in there, it allows us to, to change our licensure when Chief Sussi gets here and glean the additional revenue. So absent keeping those in the budget book, I would have to take this X out and take away that $168,000 in revenue.
Is it an appropriate time to de into that revenue, or is that later point?
I don't think it matters. Is that, I mean, we're worried about that revenue being accurate and that it does actually offset.
And timing, so presumably there's some time to get certified. I don't, I don't know if it's similar to MLEAP, but maybe it's not nearly that robust, but a time goes in a certification process, and then a ramp-up to actually increase billing, so I'm curious when it would actually hit our financials.
Chief, if you can comment on the time period with, with Tom started to change that over?
Yeah, so there's a licensure process that we'll have to go through with the state, where they're going to evaluate what we have, what we offer. There'll be some labor involved on, on my end, that's my specialty. But I should be able to, if all things fall into place. This system will be in place at the start of the fiscal year, so that we'll have that change over be almost instantaneous, and we'll be able to start billing at that new rate to be able to carry forward the money that we've discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Bob?
I just have a point of order here. So please specifically clarify here, the two firefighter, paramedic positions are currently in the numbers, the bottom-line numbers you're giving us. Okay, so in order for those to continue in the budget process and be funded, no action other than the bottom-line approval of the council is required?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
One other clarifying question. Is that projection, Steve, based on 100% receivable rate, or is it discounted for? How does that work on that piece?
So again, as I commented, it does not change your charge master. It does not change what you're going to bill. So I'm not coming to you as a council, asking you to increase the billable rates. As it sits now, you could increase your billable rates and have very little impact on net cash. It all goes to contractual allowances and bad debt. So contractual allowances is the difference between what we bill, what our charge master says that we bill, not different than a hospital or other medical provider has, is the difference between what we bill and what we actually receive for payment. So Center for Medicare Services sets that reimbursement rate for Medicare, and then the Medicare funds that is passed to the states, the state then sets the billable, the payable rates for main care. Private insurances hinge off from what CMS pays, so they won't, they will only pay a certain amount over and above what CMS pays, typically not much, much more. So the difference between what we send you as a bill versus what the insurances actually will pay, that's the contractual allowance. By changing our licensure level, it will decrease that contractual allowance. So we won't charge more, but will be essentially paid more through CMS, which leads to increased reimbursement under private insurance as well for the same billable rate. So it goes to your contractual allowances. Debt service is always a factor of, that's why it doesn't do you any good, much good, to charge substantially more for, for individuals that have no insurances at all, that do not pay, you're just going to sacrifice more on bad debt and end up writing that off. So there's a balance between what we, what we charge versus what we glean for cash. So that analysis always goes to your payer mix, the type of numbers that you run, BLS versus ALS versus no assessments, and what you are allowed to glean from CMS. So for example, when I was operating in the northern part of the state, and we were billing under super rural, if you saw those billable rates here, this, this, this department would pay for itself two times over because of the distances and such. itself two times over because of the distances and such.
And then, Madam Mayor, if you would give me the liberty, your question was really specific and quick to answer. She was really looking for what is and isn't included in the current numbers.
Correct.
Not a rundown of every line item. So I don't know if that would be helpful to run down specifically what is in the numbers.
I just want to make sure all these positions that here are in.
Yeah, the way he's, seems like the X's mean he took the revenue.
Okay, so I'll skip down to just the X's then.
Okay, and everything else is in?
Right now, fire marshal's position has an X in it.
Yeah.
That X eliminates the funding of $120,000 for the position. It eliminates $8,625 of revenue associated with immediate permits, producing a net change to taxation of, reduction of $1,10375.
Okay.
Going further down the list, I'm asking as your administrator that if you're going to eliminate the fire marshal's position, for all of the reasons I laid out to you earlier in the presentation, I need resources with the department and the incoming fire chief to find ways to provide all of the services that would be eliminated under this position. I need to find, I need to have the resources, so I'm asking you for exactly the same dollar amount back in of $120,000 pursuant to that reorganization. So the 120 comes out, I'm asking for 120 to go back in. The next adjustment in here goes to your capital program. There's estimates in there to address the memorial gym for the first year, taking that on. There's masonry work that's required by our insurance carrier. There's retipping that needs to be done on the steps as well as the brick on the south, southwesterly facing side. The roof membrane needs to be done on the entire building, and they seek to buy, purchase a floor cover system to allow them to rent to larger venues without causing damage to the wood floors in there. But at a total cost of $392,100, it's in the capital program. We are suggesting to X that out, so you take that $392,000 out of the capital program, you move that to debt service, five years of debt service, so approximately $400,000 bond will get that work done in the single year. You move it to debt service, by the time you take out the initial debt service through the main municipal bond bank by as early as the fall issue, you'll have one interest-only payment of $9,022 that will hit you in this fiscal year. Then you need, we would have to budget for the next fiscal year approximately $80,000 to satisfy that debt service each of the next five years. Also, we previously in here, we had the entire utilization of the reserves that the rec department had built of $295,000 to make those improvements. It was suggested to not use all of that, but to use $100,000 of those resources towards satisfying that debt service over time. So that's why you see an X in there, so that was reduced by $185,000 of revenue, but you're using $100,000 of that as offsets. That would carry on this fiscal year as well as the ensuing fiscal, the next fiscal year beyond this to satisfy that debt service. And that produces a net decrease of $292,000 as far as the municipal commitment is concerned, and it increases your debt service amount by $9,022.80. Giving those adjustments, it produces $383,077.20 reduction in expense. It increases your revenues by $164,881, producing a net change of, reduces net taxation from our original budget by $547,958.20. Carrying that over here to the council's actions produces the following results. The expense budget stays intact. The debt service is increased by $9,023. So the year-over-year change on the appropriation side is $2,403,000 or 7.61 percent. Made a change this evening pursuant to these actions of $9,023. On the municipal capital reserve, you've reduced that by $292,100 by addressing the memorial gym via debt service as opposed to taking it on a single-year hit of the capital program. You've adopted under your revenue sharing, you've increased that by $5,506 pursuant to the state's new projections. On the municipal revenue side, you've added a net of, because you've added the fire marshal, you've added the increase in CMS reimbursement of $168,000, and then you've reduced that by the $8,000 and plus of dollars on the fire marshal's permitting piece. So that produces a total bottom-line call-out of net taxation of $18483,000 in municipal revenue. That's a 10.7 percent increase, and it is changed by $164,881 this evening. In lieu of requesting that one of the police, the 11 openings in the police department be defunded for the year, I made the recommendation to use an increase of $100,000 on undesigned fund balance. So that would go to $1,100,000. That's a $250,000 increase year-over-year, and that $100,000 came in this evening as shown over here. That would call for net taxation of $19195,949, an increase of $880,712 or 4.81 percent year-over-year. It has been reduced from our starting point by $547,958. And I will note last year that the municipal commitment was down by $11,000 a year at time of adoption.
So I'd kind of like to see what it looks like if we cut the added amount in to do training and stuff with the elimination of the fire marshal's position, cut that down. I don't want to really, I'd like to see a plan in place before we spend that money as well. You know, I'm thinking that we wouldn't really start looking at that until September, and maybe $50,000 or $60,000, and we look at training options, and then we rediscuss how that looks before we make any major changes, because there's, you know, you're sitting here with a council who, for every story you told, has probably two stories of problems we've had from businesses who would rather be dealing with the state fire marshal's office. So I hate to be the bad guy in saying this. I think I've already been made to be the bad guy based on some of the comments. So I'd like to see a lower number there, and I definitely don't want it to be looking at a position for a while until we have talked about this.
So what number, what number are you suggesting? You've named two numbers. So you're thinking $60,000?
I don't know. I don't know if Ann has any idea, because she's the one who runs the numbers the most, or she was probably thinking of cutting the whole thing, if I know Ann.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm trying to be generous.
And I'm still holding at trying to give back some of the growth in valuation to our taxpayers, and I'm looking for $700,000 out of our net-to-taxation. I'm not wavering from that. I think we have a lot of work to do. I love the idea of additional revenue, but frankly, I'm nervous about how that will actually come to fruition, just frankly, in terms of timing, and I wonder if we can really bank on that additional revenue, although it sounds lovely. So there's a lot of work I feel like we need to do, honestly, and I have a list of potential items to look at that aren't included here, and I feel like, Steve, it's been frustrating a little bit because we keep looking at the same things, and so, and we're not getting where we need to get looking at the same things. So I feel like the council should really dig into the CIP, to the budget lines per department, and I think we need to have more conversations and questions and better understanding. And so, yeah, whether it's 50 or 60, I don't care, I'm looking for more than that.
We're at, was it 547? So you're looking, what, for another buck, 50?
And you wouldn't object to if more income came in another, like some of the upper lines that he was talking about, that we could get revenues from because of putting people in certain positions? You wouldn't mind him using some of those funds for training? Like he could shift, if he knew there were some monies that were left over, he could shift those into training. What I'm concerned about is Scott's coming on board. We've suggested no fire marshal, and he's got to regroup what the fire marshal used to do, and he has to train people, and I don't want to leave the new guy with no resources because I think he's highly intelligent and I think he can do a great job. And I do know Craig, whoops, Craig restructured, when he came on board, he restructured the police department, which has worked out really well. And Scott, every time I've spoken to him and heard him speak here, he sounds like Craig. He has the same type of leadership skills. So I imagine he's going to be very creative in what he would like to see for training and to bringing people, maybe even restructuring some. So I don't want to leave him without any funds in there to do that, so. And I don't know if there's some other place, Steve, like some of the $168,000, if that can be used, part of that for training or not, or I'm not too clear on that. And forgive me, this is definitely my first year doing this.
Right now, that $168,000 is coming in as a general fund revenue, which reduces the overall net taxation call.
Okay. Right. So the answer is no.
So in the conversation of how much, how much dollar resources that as your manager I will have to work with a new fire chief and work with the department as far as restructuring, reassigning this out across multiple people, we had that presentation this evening as far as their workload, assigning duties out across multiple people in different areas, there's that concern. There is a listed concern of areas that we currently do not have cross-training in to fulfill these job duties that have been filled all of these years. So we're going to be deferring plain review to state fire marshal's office immediately. We will be seeking as to how rapidly we can up-train other individuals and pull them out of current job performance in order to fill these voids.
So Ann, let me, right now, we have taken out $547,000, and so you're looking for another $150,000. And if we took out $60,000, that leaves us with $90,000 that you're looking for. I do want to point out that last...
The other way.
What?
Yes, you're right. I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Remember, I'm the mathematician.
Oh, that's right.
So if I remember correctly, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't the municipal side last year, weren't we lower? We were high?
The municipal commitment last year was $11,000 and change, less than the prior year's commitment. So this is an $880,000 increase, well, $870,000 increase over a two-year span. That amount is not sustainable in the long term. That $880,000 is lower than the year-over-year change just in the cost of living increase in all of the CBAs as well as the personnel policy. It also does not account for the additional $500,000 ramp-up, which is $1.1 million higher than the CIP calls for under the charter that's being absorbed, taking on a brand-new facility at an additional $150,000 of operating cost with a meager $30,000 in operating revenue to offset that, and taking on significant capital improvements into that building in order to preserve it and utilize it long-term. All of those are accounted for in here. When previously asked of the superintendent as to whether the budget that was being authorized tonight left that department absent harm, I believe the answer to that was yes. Going beyond this, I can't answer that as being a yes, nor can I answer the yes for the removal of the fire marshal's position because I have no capacity to fill those job needs. And when you're talking about swagging a number, is it 50, is it 60, is it 120,000, without concerning conversation around how that's going to take place and what that looks like? Where I have, you know, something of the magnitude of three months to solve that, i.e. train people as well as impact bargain and everything else that's going to go on to that, there's a lot going on there.
And I agree with you, Steve, and so I would be very comfortable with the 120,000 that was there, cutting that in half and making it 60,000 so that we're, I am comfortable with not reaching that goal of, for $90,000, knowing that last year, we didn't have as many funds as the school side, and so we're kind of doing catch-up a little bit, and we've taken on memorial gym, which is quite costly for us. So I would think that would be a good compromise to kind of settle in there, but I don't know what everybody else thinks. And do you want to see what the bottom line would look like?
Yes, I'd love to see what the bottom line looks like.
When you raised your hand, I thought, you're a bottom-line guy.
That's where I'm going. I'm a bottom-line guy.
I got that.
120, is 120 lower to 60?
So before I lower that, we're currently at 4.32 percent net taxation year-over-year, 2.31 percent on the tax bill or 34 cents.
So Jonathan, you were trying to get, your goal was 4 percent?
Yeah, or less. So is that, is that including the school budget, Steve?
It is.
That 2 percent, was it?
Yes.
If I reduce the other adjustments as far as resources to reorganize the loss of the fire marshal's position, if I reduce that to $60,000, you have a net impacted taxation of 2.15 percent or 32 cents. So it made 2 pennies per thousand change to the estimated mill rate.
I think that reaches the goals that we were talking about doing.
Yeah, 2 percent does.
Without, and leaving the new fire chief some resources.
Yeah, I want to make sure we have some resources for the impact of the change, so I'm okay with that. If we land at 2.3 percent net-to-taxation overall, I think that seems plenty reasonable.
Anyone else want to make a comment? Bob?
I'm comfortable with the municipal budget as presented.
Thank you. Pete?
I'm comfortable with the budget as presented right now, municipal and school.
Okay. Ann?
I will not be voting in approval of the budget as it stands for the municipal side.
Okay. Maura?
I'm comfortable with the cut to lower it because I think it's going to take some time. I'm comfortable with the number, but this is, I mean, everybody's saying that it's, everybody's complaining it's too low for inflation. I don't think anybody is getting higher wages. Most people aren't getting higher wages and inflation, and they're making allowances, they're making cuts, and you can't not cut at some point when it's too much for our taxpayer. And I think people need to realize that. You can shake your heads at me all you want, but I, I'm comfortable with it. I'm not, you know, I'll probably vote in favor as long as we cut the 120 to 60. And I want to make sure that that's clear, that's not position-related for now. It's, I want to see a plan, and I want to see it. The first thing that we go towards is education funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I make a couple of quick comments, just around the budget, food for thought? So with the removal of the budget line item for the fire marshal, there is a truck that's been used by the department for that purpose, and I am wondering about the reclassification of that for our codes department. And I understand there would be retooling costs, whatever the term would be, but there would be costs associated with that, but the truck is currently in the CIP for, I believe, $43,500. In addition, I wondered if ramping up to the two, adding the two firefighter EMS positions would allow us to reduce our budgeted overtime line for the fire department, which is not insignificant. So that was another question that I had.
Ann, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that second question.
Well, so we're...
For the first, for $43,000, let's ask him about that one first.
Oh, okay.
So move that from CIP and move it to codes and don't buy him a new vehicle so we save $43,000.
Correct.
Steve?
So your recommendation is to remove the $43,000 from the Parks and Recreation Department?
No, there's a codes vehicle in the CIP. The parks vehicle is being paid with reserve funds, is my understanding, when I looked at it.
There is, there is the replacement for a code vehicle, yes, there is.
And I don't think we currently have a truck in codes, which seems like that could be beneficial to that department.
All right. So that gets us even closer.
So what I'm not understanding is, so the code department is up for purchase of a truck. They're selling two of their vehicles out of the fleet and replacing that with one vehicle.
Okay.
Right, so that being said, and then the other truck for the year was the Parks and Recreation truck.
Okay, so if we're selling two vehicles out of codes, can we use that towards the Parks and Rec truck? Would there still be a saving?
No, the sale of the two vehicles in codes goes towards, that's why there's a lower amount in there to purchase the truck in the code department.
I guess what I'm looking at is a way to put a vehicle into use and reduce our CIP burden. So I, we can't figure out...
To put which vehicle into use?
What's that?
To put which vehicle into use?
To, to put which vehicle into use?
The fire marshal. The fire marshal truck.
Well, I'm assuming that's going back to the department. That's a critical component of their operations. It's brought on scene by the fire marshal, with tools and equipment in there, uh, as part of the response.
Okay. So other, um, again, food for thought would be, I'm curious, I wanted to better understand, with the shift from, uh, not having a SRO at our school department and having an officer, um, with RPD that would go to MDEA, I believe we saw numbers around 200,000 reimbursement for a fully burdened position, that's about half of that. So I just wanted to understand if there was additional revenue that affects our, um, net to taxation that we're not accounting for, so that was a question. Um, I also wondered about the 80,000 in pre-development activities and the timing of that for our fire department buildings with, i-if that could be pushed to a future budget year. Obviously, we need to make that investment, but I'm just curious about timing of that 80,000. Um, I think those are, that's it for the moment, but again, that was just my point being, I don't feel like we've dug in as a council to some of our numbers. I don't feel like we've had some deep conversation on, um, some of these budget lines, and I, I think, one, it's helpful for our community members to hear us have that conversation and see that transparency, and see the work being done, and I, two, I think it's important that we feel like we've really done everything we can to reduce the net to taxation. So that's where I'm at.
So you're, so basically, what I'm hearing is you'd like to extend the time that we discuss things, but if we're going to do that, I want to kill some of these, like, I want to kill some of the conversations we're having, because I don't want to have, I, I know where I feel, I know where, pretty much my counselors feel about the position we've pretty much discussed, discussed tonight, and we spent that much time on, you know, just one department. I think that's what Anne is saying, is like, we really haven't delved into a lot of the other, you know, issues in departments, and, um, whether there isn't something we're missing. I think that's what she's saying, is like, she'd like some more time. We don't have to approve the municipal budget tonight.
I'm, I'd support doing some more digging, um, if there's some more meat to take off the, the bones as far as, um, getting, uh, less impact to the, to the taxpayers, I'd, I'd be in support of that, especially if we have the time to do that.
So, from what I understand, what Maura is saying is, she wants us to approve the reduction, um, for the fire marshal. Um, she wants us to approve the reduction from 120,000 to 60,000, so we're not discussing that again for training, and that training would then take place, uh, probably after September, giving, coming forward with a plan for us to take a look at. And so that part would be all done. Then we just want to look at, see if we can find a couple more cuts, like, um, the truck. Um, I, I want an explanation of how the fire department is going to use that truck, because obviously, they could take the tools from that and move it to something that they already have. So I think having the tools and something isn't an issue for me, uh, but I would like to find out if I'm missing something, because sometimes I, I don't know how they all work, and I'd, I'd rather hear from them on that. Um, and what were the other things you wanted to take a look at?
I, I just want to understand the MDEA officer, um, reimbursement and the differential between that and our fully burdened cost of that police officer.
Okay. All right. So part of this is a done deal tonight, and then we're just looking at some other little things to come up with, the bubbler that the-
And we are trying to fund those two positions, I think that's, that we haven't talked about that, and we are trying to fund those two positions, and part of it is looking at savings. So, yeah, for the, you know, because that helps mitigate.
Question is-
My question is on the, uh, the truck. I would assume that it would go back to the fire department, because they're going to have to go and do inspections, um, you're going to have to divide it up. Could I get some insight from you, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Removal of the position is the position, and I strongly disagree with that, but reallocating the equipment that the fire department has designated to itself is an entirely different discussion, and not, I don't think appropriate for this venue. We purchased that truck with the intent of it being used for the fire marshal's vehicle, and if your intent is to move a vehicle from the fire department to another department, we can have that discussion, but we'll decide which vehicle is best suited for us to let go of, take off of our burden, and it might not be the fire marshal's vehicle. Because we have a fleet, the way it is designed, I'll need to do an evaluation and take time to see what type of vehicle we would be okay, if that is the direction I'm ordered to go.
Could we rephrase that, that this is the taxpayers' vehicles?
Right. And I fully understand and agree that, and I've dedicated my entire life to working for the taxpayer, uh, but we take pride and ownership of the vehicles, and so they refer to them as ours because we care for them as such.
I understand that.
Are there any other questions, Counselor?
I just wanted to fully understand about if we was to take the truck and reassign it, I'm kind of leaning towards leaving it where it should be.
Yes.
Um, just after discussions, I think that's where it should stay, but I'm only one person, so if we can further discuss that, I would appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't want to waste a lot of staff or council time, um, so if I'm in the minority on this, I think that'd be important information to share, do you know what I mean? So, um-
I think emotions are running high tonight, and it might not be a bad idea to have one more meeting to pull this together.
Bob, what do you think?
Well, I'm kind of, uh, I, first of all, I can, I can live with whatever procedure the council, uh, wants to use, but I was just wondering if we couldn't take, I mean, possibly take a short break, get some of these questions in order, uh, I don't know, and, and see if we can just plow our way through it and get it done.
Because it is only five after-
It's five after eight. I mean, we do have time to do this tonight, we have all these people, uh, who have been here and patiently waiting, um-
I would agree, Bob. I would go with that.
And, and so personally, I'd like to get it done. I, I understand what the deputy mayor is saying, um, but I still think that leaves everything hanging out there another week. There, there are people's lives involved with this also, that, uh, hanging out there another week, and I, I would like to see if we can get it done, to get it done. Maybe, maybe we can't, but-
And I, I'm kind of concerned that we told the school side, uh, 700,000, and, um, and I think the city side is coming up with 700,000, or they're close to it, and if, um, we could come up with, how much were we off? 90,000? Um, where would that be? Can we find 90,000? Um, and so I'm asking you guys, Steve, you guys know the budget better than, we don't have to talk to the fire department, I think you gave up enough already, um, so are there other areas, um, that we could take a look at? And, and I, I understand the passion about having the truck be a part of the fire department, um, I understand that. Uh, so Bob?
Let me just, uh, this is probably not going to be popular with everybody, but it's not related to the fire department, so you guys can relax. Um, the recreational, um, surplus, there we tapped in to 100,000. Um, yes, you pulling that up, Steve?
I'm pulling up your capital program.
Well, what I, what I was looking at is, um, the, the revenues there, we started with 370-something thousand revenue. We took 100,000 of that, uh, revenue, which, uh, left Recreation Department, um, with 200, I, I'm making these numbers up, but they're approximate, 200, um, and 75,000 dollars. If we're comfortable, and I realize that this, um, potentially increases revenue that we have to make up in a future year, uh, we could use another 100,000 of that, um, reserve, um, that is money that's been sitting around for a couple of years, and may likely be associated with COVID money, uh, that is taxpayer money, um, we could, I mean, we could take 90,000, we don't have to take 100,000. I'm just suggesting that as there's some money there, it's-
I would agree.
Pretty much low-hanging fruit, it doesn't, doesn't hurt anybody, uh, I just think we have to be aware that we are, you know-
That sounds like a fantastic compromise.
We're taking a lot of their reserve, uh, almost all their reserve to kind of balance the budget here, but it's a place where there's money.
Anne, how do you feel about that?
I feel like you're picking on me, Mayor.
I am.
But no, I, I appreciate that line of thinking, I guess a question for Steve would be, I'd like to be reminded when those reserves, uh, came about, I thought they were actually for Memorial Gym, right? Um, so they weren't set aside for other purpose, and then now we're not using them because we're bonding, um-
Right, but this, this would count towards the bond, towards 500? So the 500,000 dollar bond for Memorial Gym, right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, and again, I'm ballparking these numbers, is about 400,000.
Correct.
So now we would take another 100,000, and that bond would then go down to 300,000. That may not have the effect-
I don't think we would change the bonding, we would just move it into using some of those reserve funds. It'd be like a use of carryover, or use of fund balance.
Yeah.
But yeah.
That would reach the goal that you, where we've been talking about trying to reach. Jonathan, how do you feel about that? That would definitely reach the goal.
So where's our bottom line for net to taxation, uh, at this point?
Ronnie, on the col- column H, the 100, uh, what is the dollar amount that needs to go in there for the re, so there was 295,000 dollars in that reserve, correct?
The reserve, the reserve's on the, uh, so the reserve is 295,000.
No, no, the, the, the Parks and Recreation Reserve is this line. Correct. So if they want to use 190,000 of that towards satisfying the debt service? No, I thought there was, excuse me, is 375,000 originally?
No.
295? Not 395? Okay, I'm 100,000 off. Okay. All right. Uh, no, well, 100,000 of that was allocated towards the, the bond. Okay? So that would leave them, let me correct myself, 195,000 dollars in the recreational surplus. I'm suggesting we take a hun, another 100,000, or 90,000 of that. So it would leave 105,000 for recreational reserves, which again, is reserves that have been built up because of our health COVID situation, other monies that have come in, that are basically taxpayer money, uh, that we can, to Anne's point, we can give back. So I, I think it, if it works, I think it's a solution that, can't think of the right analogy now, but it solves many problems, so let's leave it at that.
Brady is on and has his hand up. Do you want to hear from Brady? Okay, Brady?
Sure.
Can he, can you hear us, Brady?
I can hear you, thank you. I just can't start my video, it says it's unable to start. I just want to, and granted, I'm new, and I understand this fund's been building, um, for a while, but, there we go. Um, I just want to let you know that it's not all from taxpayer dollars, this is program revenue fees, that is not just from the tax base of the city of Sanford, it's from surrounding communities that are paying to, to be a part of our programming. It's not like we're at, we're asking them for X amount of dollars just because, like a taxation, it's because they're signing their children up and they're participating in our programs to benefit their children and everything along with that. So I, I strongly disagree with taking X amount of funds out from what we've built in preparation to take over Memorial Gym to, to offset the tax base. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Brady.
Ronnie, are you satisfied that I'm showing that number correctly? I've got to show it as a revenue.
What do you have?
I've got 190,000 dollars in there, as a revenue, thinking it was 190,000 dollars of the reserves. It's going to become a revenue to offset the debt service.
Yeah, we have to include 390,000, but that's-
All right, so you have to put a net of 105.
Steve, could we do it in two different lines? I feel like that would be clearer, do you know what I mean? So that line would be the, um, reduction in CIP of 392, and reduction in revenue of 295, and then an additional line to show use of the carryover? Does that make sense, Ronnie? Like, I think it'd be easier to see it for us, because then numbers get funny.
It's going to produce a, a net, a reduction of 202,100. Yep? And you're adding back 90, 9,000 dollars for debt service.
But you just reduced our prior reduction to net to taxation, so we're doing something off.
Something wrong, because now we're at 517.
I think if we put it on two separate lines, we can see it.
We were a lot closer before.
Yeah, I don't know. It's not, I don't think it's going to do, depending on where they've put it, and that's the problem, I, you had it somewhere as offsetting revenue, right? So I don't think it's going to do much.
So I think what we're trying to do is, originally, we were bonding for, we were going to shift, uh, out of the CIP, 392, bond it, but then we couldn't use the revenue of 295. So the net impact was only like 100,000 dollars to reduce the net to taxation originally, and then we went, oh, stinker, that doesn't really help us a whole lot. But what if we use those reserves instead of for the improvements to Memorial Gym, which we're now going to bond, but use them for operations essentially, to, to Brady's point, we should use them for operations of our Parks Department, we're going to put it back into the general fund, essentially. So that's where, that's where it helps us.
Increase the bond amount.
How much is the bond amount?
392.
No. The bond's closer to 500,000.
No, 400.
400, okay, well.
Does that not make sense?
It does, but I, I think, you know, as he's shuffling the numbers, I don't think the changes are what we, my worry is that the change is not what we think, and I'm looking to Ronnie and, um-
She can tell.
This is what it looks like to watch the sausage being made.
Well, this is, this is part of trying to make sure we can keep in the two firefighter paramedic positions and other positions that we're concerned about in other departments, so.
Right, it's also part of our new role, now that the Budget Committee has been eliminated. Just making the observation that you're seeing us work in different ways maybe than you have in the past.
Well, this, you know, once we're done this process, I really think we need to consider having some sort of a subcommittee kind of hashing up some of the details, even if it's all of us.
No, I, so I think this is a point of confusion for some of us, is that the cost for Memorial Gym of 392, 392,100 in our CIP had offsetting revenue of 295. So the actual cost in our budget for Memorial Gym improvements was actually only about 100,000 dollars. So that's what the issue is, that bonding doesn't give us 400,000, it, it only gives us 100,000. So to, what I thought Bob was saying is, let's use some of that, um, carryover that's, was the 295, and put it to use in our general fund, but maybe that's not what you intended?
So that, that's, that you have the net effect here, so the 295,000 previously was being used as part of your budget book, reduce that to 105,000, leaving, leaving that amount in there, so it's a reduction of 195,000, um, excuse me, it's a reduction of 190,000 dollars from what's in, so it leaves 190,000 dollars in your budget book.
Now, is the number, the 602,000, is that a true number? So we're off by 90,000?
I call it closer to 100.
I'm trying to be positive, Anne. It sounds like I have to find less money when I say-
In all honesty, other than positions, the only thing we have to turn to is, you know, not doing the jump in CIP, um, CIP for roads this year.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to vote for that.
I'm actually happy where it is. I think we made great strides.
Tonight.
I think we need to revisit how we do this and start earlier so that we know more of where some of the other, like, what are some of the things we could cut? You know, we, we don't really know that.
Or are these priorities and should they be in there this year or do they have to wait another year? Those, you're right, those conversations should occur a lot earlier than this because.
Steve, is there or should there be an impact to our overtime at the Fire Department by ramping up? Shouldn't that be a positive change?
Could you say that again?
Shouldn't our Fire Department overtime go down with the ramp up in staff?
Go down with the ramp up in staff?
Correct. Shouldn't we have less overtime if we have more staff to fill, fill shifts?
The 13 positions.
It's not going to significantly change there because you were replacing any loss of an officer beyond one. So once they fall off staff by one, you're replacing all of those hours thereafter, so.
So one of the, one of the good things about the way the contract was written, and it was a recognition of a problem we had had in the past, when we did a 10 man, it had to be, if it was 10, it had to be 10. And the recognition that you can't always bill to the exact number that's on shift because of vacations or sick or something like that. So as soon as this shift goes to 13, they're only required to fill to 12. So if they have two people out, they only definitely have to get that one person back. So which helps, that, that helped, we had some massive overtime when it was billed 10, billed 10, and it doesn't work functionally. So, but you build to one below what your ma, what your shift typically is, it tends to work okay for overtime, so. So as soon as we get to 13, we have to fill to 12. So whatever shift gets to 13, we fill to 12.
Steve?
You're currently at 2.16% net change to taxation year over year, which is the, I think you were at 2.02% last year.
Steve, any concerns about the overlay shift? So we have a nine cent adjustment by reducing our overlay, but you feel comfortable with that?
The overlay currently is provided at 101,324, uh, 334. That's a 261,000 reduction over last year's overlay. That's, that's the.
That's a yes, you feel comfortable with it?
That's the rounding factor of a penny. Actually, four, four pennies. Yeah, four pennies. To get to an even number. 32 cents. When the tax bill generates beyond the fourth digit, not good. It creates all of these small amounts on the tax bill, so we get that to round off to the, the nearest two digits beyond the decimal. I, what I'm, the sense I'm getting right now is we're sitting here and we are, we are trying to do our due diligence to this, to this whole process. Every, everyone is doing that. But I think what we're, we're coming up against, I'm speaking to my fellow counselors, we're coming up against a wall here where, you know, we've got two 90,000 that one counselor is basically looking for, maybe, maybe more than one. But we're, and to the mayor's point, we are pretty close. Are we going to get that other 90,000 or are we just going to sit here and spin our wheels? Do we need to put this off to next week, which is not something I'm in favor of, to get more information? But it seems like we, we've either got to make a motion here and get this done, whether it passes or whether it doesn't pass, and you know, if it doesn't pass, we've got more work to do. If it does pass, we're, we're, we're done.
So, how do you feel about the fact that, I mean, sorry to the School Department, but they did get higher than the 700,000. They were higher in their increases, so it seems appropriate. So between the two, it's close to the 1.4 we were looking for. I mean, I hate to say that, I'm sorry, ma'am. I hate to say that, but we, you know, we are pretty much, we're really close to the 1.4 we were looking for. And I don't.
Oh, I hear you, and I, I hear Counselor Stackpole as well. Yeah, I'm just going to say that I, I don't think we're fighting hard enough for our community members. That's just my, it's just how I feel about it. And so, but that's okay to be in the minority. And, I mean, we, we certainly have put some effort in. I, I don't think that we've put in, frankly, all the effort we could have. I'm, I will, I'm happy to have the firefighter paramedic positions in. I feel like there's some effort made to, to make that happen and balance that out, but, but I still feel like we're falling short. And that's just my personal opinion.
And I get that. I'm not comfortable going into next year at all.
Jonathan?
So I'd like to make a motion that we take another look at this for another session, see if there's a little bit more meat to be had. Especially since we do have a little bit of more time. I think we've kind of covered the stuff on the cut sheet and we're pretty well settled there, but there may be some other items that we haven't dug into as deeply. So I'd be supportive of taking a closer look at some other line items if possible.
That was a motion.
Was that a motion?
Uh, yes, that was a motion.
Motion to, to continue this discussion.
Well, I would second that, Councilor Martel.
Is that a second?
Yeah. All those in favor? All those against?
Yes.
I am.
We should have put this, the next, the counselors up here so they could have voted for that.
I am in favor of leaving it as is. I think we've done an excellent job. I think, especially being able to get two paramedic positions in the budget. I think that's fantastic. And I think that if we keep going, I, I just think we're going to be at the same spot. So I'm going to make a motion that we accept the budget as it is right before us right now.
Just so you know, everybody, anybody who doesn't have homestead is seeing a four point, it's a 4%, right? No homestead is 4% or something like that? We have to, we have to remember that homestead is, is homestead factored in at the 2% or?
Two, 2%, with or without. There's no change in the homestead rate. There's no change. Positive impact for us this year was we went from 73 to 76% reimbursement on the homestead, which reduced the overall level of taxation, i.e. the businesses will be paying less for that shift than prior to. Each homeowner that had a $25,000 exemption last year is going to see the same level of exemption this year, absent shifts in valuation, and the seniors program is going to kick in this year. So they're going to see stabilization. So they will not pay this 2% increase for anybody that filed for that program. The state's supposed to, supposed to reimburse us at 100% of that loss of revenue that they've, they've given as a stabilization.
Jonathan?
Just for those that are here and watching online, would you be able to bring up that chart that showed the changes over, yes, this one here? And is that updated to the current values?
It is updated.
Okay. Just so everyone can see that.
That's a pretty low increase.
So a $200,000 home is going to see a change year over year of $63.90. Five dollars and 33 cents per month change.
Thank you.
There's a motion. Do we have a second? We've got a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
What, what are we voting on?
We're voting at the budget as is.
32 cents.
Okay, well, I completely missed that motion. I got the other one. Okay, so bottom line as is, okay.
All those in favor? Okay, so it's four, all those against, two. It passes. All right. The next, the last thing is, in order to, it's 23, 145,01, am I getting this the right one? Yeah. In order to discuss and vote on the nominations for the appointment to fill open city council seats until December 31, 2023 pursuant to sections 212.3 of the Sanford City Charter. And I've got some stuff to hand you guys.
I'm going to make a motion to discuss because I want to discuss how great the process really was and how great the applicants were.
I'll second that motion.
There you go, Maura.
Thank you.
And I will need these back. Now, for those people wondering what we're looking at, last, was it just last week? Oh my gosh, it seems long. We had three wonderful people, and I can't even believe how lucky we were to get the three people to actually want to be a part of our group, especially after seeing how we function sometimes. So we have, is Oliver?
Yeah, he's way in the back.
There's, hi Oliver. And then we have Crystal, who is in the front here, and then Nathan, who's sitting beside her.
You heard it was very popular, being watched on the, it was one of our more popular cliques this week.
Yes. Well, and so to even start this out, we were amazed that the three of you wanted to apply. You, you guys are quality people. You've done wonderful things in this community. You've served this community. It's just amazing.
And we know they will continue. No matter who sits here, we have, you know, they all serve on other things in this community.
And if you don't get appointed tonight, I want you to please, we are going to have some seats open, so please apply in the future. And so to, I've got to let you know the order that they were in, and you need to look at your answers to see what you think, because we have to elect some, somebody from this, the three of them. So as far as the questioning went, the one who had third place was Oliver, second place was Crystal, and first place was Nathan. So that's the order of, for the questioning. So now we have to have a discussion and talk about what we feel, you know, that, who would be best fit with the bizarreness that we do from time to time and.
Again, I feel like you're looking at me, Mayor.
I am, I am. I'm looking right at you, Ann. I'll look at Bob.
Part of my, to be honest, I'll start if you'd like, because part, part of my process here, and I've known, I don't know all three of them as well as I would know one or two, but we've had some great things happening on the planning board and part of my process has been, it's because of two of the people who applied and I would hate to lose that forward momentum on the planning board. So that has been part of my thought process in here because that board, as I tell everybody, is the third most important board that we have, and they probably do even more than we do on some weeks in particular. So that's been part of my process in thinking. I don't know if anybody else was thinking the same thing, because we, it's been a great, great change this year. I mean, I know it's combined with the work that our code enforcement officer has done, but it has been a great change. So that's my, those are some of my comments.
Now, to let the audience know, I'm not allowed to vote, so I'm just kind of leading the discussion because the person is replacing my seat on the council and by charter, I cannot vote for that person. So.
The weird, quirky part of the charter.
Yes. So Bob, do you have any comments?
Not a lot. I think it was an excellent process. We had excellent candidates. I spoke to that at the time and, and I certainly would encourage everybody involved in the process to continue their life, hobby, whatever it is in public service. It's probably a hobby that becomes your life after a while. And just so people at home and everybody understands, we had a series of questions. We individually scored those questions, each counselor, and then those scores were tallied and that, and that's what the, that's what the mayor was referring to. And so I, I really just think each of us have to look at how we tallied the answers to those questions and based on that, you know, let that.
Their resume.
And resume, right, and let that inform our decision as we're going ahead here.
Ann, do you have any comments?
I'll just say thanks to all three of you for putting your name forward, and I do hope, as others have said, that you continue your work here in Sanford. It's really inspiring to see folks like yourselves who are well qualified, well spoken, and great ambassadors for our community, willing to step forward. So please stick with it. And I am a numbers person, as you may have guessed, so I tend to rely on the data that came out of the scoring process.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the, the three candidates. So we did get letters of applications from all three of them. They were all excellent. And then we did come, have, submit questions. So those questions rolled into these, the questions that went to the candidates. And so we just kind of went back and forth with the, the different candidates and questions and everyone seemed very well prepared and I really appreciate that. And being an engineer, I'm a numbers guy too, so I'm happy to see that it looks like we had a, a clear sort of number stack. So I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out again and look forward to working with whoever is selected.
I'd like to point out that the people who made the toughest questions was Ann and Jonathan. Pete, do you have any comments?
For the three, thank you very much and everybody else that put in for being appointed on the city council. It's a huge difference than running for council like Oliver and I did. We froze, you know, on the election night. But it's different being appointed. So that's why we had to come with these, these neutral questions, fair. Can you be here on Tuesdays? Can you be here on a Wednesday? These are things that were very important to me so we don't have to pick up slack from other subcommittees. So everybody, you were real close. This is, this is pretty awesome for me and I'd like to thank you guys. And I wanted you to understand the difference between appointing and running. So thank you.
Maura?
Um, Madam Mayor, I'd like to go by the numbers, even though I love all three of them, and I'd like to nominate Nathan Hitchcock as the first nomination we have for the city council seat, the vacant city council seat.
And all those in favor of Nathan? All right, thank you. And we have Sue here. She's going to swear. Nathan, you want to come up to the podium? And congratulations. Right up here.
Come stand, Nate.
You come right up here with Sue and she's going to swear you in.
And one of your best friends is on Zoom, Jake. I can see it here.
You want to come over here so?
Get him on camera.
Raise your right hand, please. I am pleased. State your name.
I am Nathaniel Hitchcock.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Maine.
And of the state of Maine.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the city of Sanford.
And ordinances of the city of Sanford.
And statutes of the city of Maine. And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties as city council member for the city of Sanford.
The duties as city council member for the city of Sanford. Thank you.
Nathan? Take your seat. And you will get a name tag at some point. And we're at the end of the meeting, so we're going to ask for council member comments. And you are now a council member, so you may make a comment too. Do you want to start or do you want to end?
Sure, I can start. As you can see, there's going to be a learning process for me here. But I want to thank members of city council for the rigorous process in order to appoint. I want to thank the other two colleagues that are with me here, Crystal Tenney and Oliver Jones. They really helped develop that, that interview process. Thank you to everyone that's here. Everyone cares about what they're, you know, really cares here about what's going on in their community and their departments. And, you know, it's a, it's a tenuous discussion that we're having here about the budget. And I'm glad to be able to be here to be a part of it. Thank you to all my friends and family who have supported me. And yes, just thank you to everyone. to everyone, it's an honor.
Thank you. Pete?
I'd like to say my condolences to the Smalley family. I've known this family since my childhood, a little kid, and John Smalley passed away senior on Monday. He did a lot for me growing up, I was always a safe place to go. His wife Carol always brought me in, and their two boys, we all kind of grew up together. And I just want to say I'm sorry to the whole family, he's going to be surly missed, to Ricky and Johnny, my heart goes out to you guys, and I, I'm sorry that, that you're passing. Rest in peace, John.
Thank you, Pete. Jonathan, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone for the public participation in the budgeting process. I know we're kind of at the tail end of it at this point, but, you know, a lot of, a lot of people showed up and spoke to their, what they had in their hearts for what they wanted to see, and I, I appreciate seeing that, because sometimes you don't get as much participation as you'd, you'd like to see, so just wanted to thank everyone for coming out. Thank you.
Ann?
Well, I wanted to share in light of the city clerk's proclamation, not a well-known fact about myself, but my grandfather Leo Pelletier was a very longstanding city clerk here in Sanford, and I know he was dedicated and passionate about serving our community, and I think that that continues in our clerk's office, and we have some unsung heroes in that office that I appreciate. And then I, I just want to say that, and I'm going to borrow Mr. Wilber's comments, I don't know if he's still here, but he was talking last week about the fire marshal's position, and he said that thankless, there's a thankless, it was a thankless job to be the bad guy for the right reason, and I often feel that very personally and deeply as a city councilor here in Sanford, but I hope folks that know me, and if you do really know me, you'll know this to be true, I, I make decisions that I try to be balanced and fair and think about the community as a whole, and I, I do that because I care deeply about our community, and sometimes I'll make decisions that nobody likes, and that's okay. Sometimes half of you will like it, and that's okay too, and once in a very rare moment, I get a lot of support. But I just want to say that it comes, all of my decisions and my processes up here come from a very passionate and real place of caring about our community and believing in its bright future. Oh, thank you.
Bob?
Well, well said. Welcome, Nathan, and I would not try to steal her thunder in any way, but echo the comments of, of Council Hanselman. It's, it's, it's not easy to sit up here and do this for any of us, and this was, in some ways particularly, I, I think this is probably the most difficult budget to say, yeah, I can only recount for myself, for the past seven years.
School committee, you've done some.
Well, well, don't go back, don't go back to school committee. Everybody here is too young to remember my days on the school committee, when, when we used to have to, have to fight quite hard to get what, what we needed. But anyways, that's, that's ancient history, and we don't need to go down that road, but, you know, there, there isn't anybody sitting on this council that did not take this process very, very seriously, and unfortunately, it doesn't come to the results that everybody was looking for, but I, I do think what we're doing here is in the best interest of, of the taxpayers, so.
Maura?
Can I segue sort of into future agenda items?
No, I've got to talk too.
Oh, oh, you want to talk to you?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, and I'll just.
Oh, you want me to talk, then you talk, so you can segue?
I'll try to pick a couple. First, the River Street construction, there's been some comments on Facebook, and it would be helpful if there was a link to the, to kind of the plan, so we could kind, we could see, I could pull up some of the stuff as people are talking, and I, I would assume that Mr. Hill has started going to the neighbors and having those discussions and looking for easements or liens of construction, so it'd just be helpful to have the link, because I'm sure the plans are somewhere and I'm just not finding them. I looked in the projects area and it wasn't there. I also got an email from Paul O'Jay, who's over at the high school, regarding the cable situation, and I didn't know if there's something, I'll send it over to Larissa, and maybe we can figure out what's happening and if there's a resolution to the cable issue at the high school. The other stuff was the ATVs, when Mr. Leggett spoke, I didn't know how the workaround from the downtown rail trail was working, because I think we would like to see their ability to go from Lebanon to, up into the Waterboro area without, we, we want to try to resolve that issue if, if it's possible, without having to go through an urban area, and.
I think Steve was working on, went to some meeting that addressed that.
Yeah, that's why I was curious if we could get it up to you.
That instead of having the ATV trails go through Sanford, there was, weren't you with the group that was meeting about them going around?
With the Department of Agriculture and Forestry, the state trails coordinator was here. It was discussed that the next action plan was to improve, regain the power line trail that starts in Lebanon. They've lost access to that because of the state of ill repair, that the town of Lebanon would be the lead applicant for that grant, and that they would do work on that particular trail, try and recoup that, that would get ATV years all the way to Gray Maine at that point in time, because our rail bed had seen adverse impacts by overuse because of the loss of that trail, so that was the first leg of the plan.
Yeah, that's, I, I thought of that when Mr. Leggett was speaking, so, and the final was, I saw a preview of the pump track presentation, I'm assuming that's going to be, I don't know if Brady's put that on property for next week, but it's a good presentation, they seem ready to have that next conversation with us, so it's not premature this time. Huh? Okay, perfect.
Fantastic.
So, so can I comment that on the city's website, if you go on the city's website, you go under community, and then under community, you click on citywide projects, that takes you to the projects page, and on the projects page is an entire, you can click the view project for the River Street construction.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking I was looking in Public Works, that's where I was looking, and there was a, there was a project there too, so.
That's excellent, great pictures too. Everybody, you need to go home and look at this, it's really good.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Crystal and Oliver, I just want to thank you very much for going through our rigorous questions, you did a great job. Actually, I learned a lot from both of you, you know, in your presentations, so thank you, and Nathan, congratulations, I really appreciate that. And for all the people who participated in the budgets process, thank you very much, I know it was a lot of hard work that went into that. And Rick, thank you for presenting, you did a fantastic job, we look forward to seeing more of you to doing that.
Anytime you'd like.
Okay, it was really good. Okay, now moving on to future agenda items.
I did mine.
Maura already did hers, so Bob?
I don't have a future agenda item, but I have one more thing I wanted to say. Got my green bucket today from garbage to gardens, so we're all set now, it'll be Tuesday pickup, at least on Summer Street.
Fantastic.
And we'll, we'll take care of that, so if you haven't signed up for that.
You and Steve, you both got your buckets, I guess.
Yeah, I forgot.
Yeah, you want to think about that, and it's a good way to compost your, your, your garbage.
Fantastic.
Ann?
And so Maura didn't reference her agenda items by goal, just saying that it, but, but under being an ambassador in our community, I want to better understand upcoming, what's going on with our Parks and Rec Department, well, Parks Department, I should say, and perhaps as we enter closer to spring, kind of what their fun programming they have happening, it'd be a great way to kind of update, get that out to our community members about programming coming up for the summer. I'd love to hear about the use of our fields and how that's going, I just love a, an update, also check in with how the advisory group to that, to the Parks Department, or excuse me, the Rec Department is going as well, so I'd just love to hear from that department in a fun, in a fun way.
And if Brady is still online, there is a grant that you might qualify for, for the Springvale Park, I think they're going to be redoing that, so please contact me on that, and I'll, I'll give you the information. Guys at the end, Jonathan, do you have anything you want to put the, on the agenda?
I do, so I think Maura kind of brought it up, but I just want to make sure that we have another discussion with the ATV club and maybe a presentation of, you know, what still needs to happen, what our options are, maybe what they're doing, I know the president was here earlier. I know that there's a lot of ATV owners and riders in Sanford that are concerned about trail access, and I just want to make sure we have some path forward that makes sense, and we can keep the discussion going, so.
Okay, thank you.
Pete?
Same thing, I believe that we should look at the ATVs. This is Maine, not Manhattan, New York, I would like to see trails open somewheres through, through the city or on the city out of bounds. I just, I just believe that banning them is, it's not right.
We only ban a section.
Right, but there's no place for them to go, so we basically banned the whole, the whole city, and that's where I think we got to dig in more and fix this, or let it go to referendum, one or the other, you know?
All right. And Nathan, do you have, I know this is.
Uh, well, yeah. I think, I have nothing prepped for today, but I guess just hearing the conversations we were having today about the, the budget, someone brought the fact that maybe we should be taking a step to looking at these, looking at this a little bit sooner. I don't know the exact timeline of when that conversation starts, but I would, was definitely someone in favor of looking at things a little bit sooner, and that way we can take a more thorough look at the budget. Again, I don't want to put something on the agenda we just finished today, but that's definitely something that I was, I, I supported.
Does Nathan sign these?
Wonderful. Now.
Okay, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting, but nobody leave, because we have all this paperwork we have to sign, so I'm signing, and Nathan, you can sign them.
No, I can't, no. He can't, he does not. These expenditures happen.
Oh, never mind. You're dismissed. The three of you have been doing your party things at, where did you guys go the other night? You guys could go back there.